Welcome to the February 2nd meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Drayman.
Here.
Friedman.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Quintero.
Here. The flag salute this evening will be led by Councilmember Weaver and the invocation by City Clerk Kasak.
Please join with me in our flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The inspiration for this evening's invocation is drawn from America's oldest weather forecaster, Punxsutawney Phil, the star of National Groundhog Day, which is today. An almost century-old tradition, many people eagerly anticipate Phil's emergence from his hole, which will signal either a long winter or an early spring. And someone once said that the trouble with weather forecasting is that it's too often -- it's right too often for us to ignore and it's wrong too often for us to rely on it. Although we may not be so affected by inclement weather like other parts of our country, we are keenly aware and ever grateful for our beautiful climate and plentiful sunshine. We pray for this and our many other blessings as residents of this wonderful city. We pray for the continued economic vitality and growth and progress of Glendale through all the months and seasons throughout the year and promise to work to make this city a model for others to admire and follow. Finally, we pray for our brave soldiers who serve our nation during this time of war and pray for their families who await their return, keep them from harm's way, and we ask for their return to be swift. Amen.
Mr. Clerk, may we have your report?
The agenda for the February 2nd, 2010, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was postponed Thursday, January 28, 2010, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
And what's next?
Next is presentation on appointments at 3:00 A. is the agenda preview for the meetings of February 9, 2010.
Mr. Starbird.
Yes, we'll go to Mr. McFaul.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Next week on July 9th, first there'll be no specific action items on the Housing Authority. There is, however, a number of items on the Redevelopment Agency meeting that will be starting at 2:30. The first will be a public hearing, and this will be a -- this will include a report from the Director of Community Redevelopment and Housing regarding the request for standards, variance for signs, and a new master sign program at a properly located 240 North Broadway. Next, the Director of Community Redevelopment and Housing will provide a report regarding design services for the pedestrian passo and alley as a part of the East Side Brand Boulevard project. And then lastly, for the Redevelopment Agency, there will be a report from the Director of Community Redevelopment Housing regarding the Alex Theater Four Court redesign. Next will be a public meeting, a joint public meeting, the Glendale City Council and Glendale Redevelopment Agency, again scheduled to start at 2:30, and this will include a single item, a report from the Director of Community Services and Parks regarding the preparation of environmental impact report for the Columbus Elementary School Soccer Field Joint Use Project. That evening at 6 o'clock will be the regularly scheduled Glendale City Council meeting, and there are a number of items to preview. The first is a report from the City Treasurer, and this will be the quarterly report from the City Treasurers for investments as of December 31, 2009. Next will be the Director of Community Services and Parks and also the Director of Libraries regarding the next steps in the formation of the Glendale Arts Council. Next, the Director of Community Services and Parks will present a report on a new agreement with Crown Castle International for existing telecommunications facility located at the Freeway Park A site. Next, the Director of Community Services and Parks will provide a report on the Maryland Mini Park Design Contract. And then the Director of Public Works will be facilitating a presentation on the California High Speed Train by the California High Speed Rail Authority Consultants Team. Lastly, there will be a hearing. The Director of Community Planning will be presenting a continuation of a hearing, and this is an appeal, a setback variance case number PVR 2008-0117, located at 1149 Cordova Avenue.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, please.
At 3:00 B. is a proclamation congratulating an organization very familiar to us, especially around election time, the Glendale Burbank League of Women Voters on their 90th anniversary.
Okay, if the members of the league would come forward to the podium, I'm going to read the proclamation.
You want me down there, too?
No.
Just a lay, please.
You're a lay member. Well, we have quite a turnout, all right. The proclamation reads as follows. Whereas the League of Women Voters, a nonpartisan political organization, has fought since 1920 to improve our system of government and to impact public policies through citizen education and advocacy. For 90 years, the League has been a grassroots citizen organization working at the national, state, and local levels in all 50 states with a network of 900 state and local league organizations. The League of Women Voters is strictly nonpartisan, neither supporting nor opposing candidates for office at any level of government, but is wholeheartedly political and works to influence policy through advocacy. The League of Women Voters is currently engaged in national and state programs to educate voters about the most vital policy issues that impact us all. Since 1940, the League of Women Voters in Glendale Burbank has organized and conducted, assisted in, and sponsored events in our community, including candidate forums, public forums on policy issues, ballot measure education, and voter registration drives that make democracy work for all citizens. The League of Women Voters of Glendale Burbank is currently participating in a nationwide project to test the most effective method of registering high school students. The League of Women Voters makes a difference in the lives of citizens because of the energy and passion of its thousands of members committed to the highest principles and dedication to making democracy work at the grassroots level. Therefore, Frank Quintero, Mayor of the City of Glendale, hereby congratulate the League of Women Voters on the occasion of their 90th anniversary and invite Glendale and Burbank citizens to join me in commending their members, past and present, for their long list of outstanding contributions.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for the education you give us all and the advocacy on behalf of democracy. Thank you, and we have one of your members behind the dais. I understand as well. House Member Najarian.
My dues are -- will be coming shortly.
Please say if you would. Thank you. 90 years ago, we were born out of the fight to get women the right to vote, and for 90 years, we have been fighting to educate all voters about their rights and responsibilities. And we'll be here for another 90 years, at least, doing the same thing. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next is City Council and Staff Comments.
Any comments, Ms. Friedman?
Thank you. Last week, I had the pleasure of participating in a little tour with a member, a representative from our Parks Department, one of our police officers, and Colin Bogart, who's our Bike and Pedestrian Planner, here, and Bill Weissman, sorry, from the Traffic and Transportation Commission, on a wonderful tour of Long Beach. Some of you may have seen the L.A. Times last week that Long Beach has declared itself the most bike-friendly city in America, and they're so proud of this and they're so committed to this that when you go to their City Hall, which is this big 14-story building, when you walk up to the front of City Hall, they don't have a city seal. Instead, they have "The Bike-Friendlyest City in the United States" written on the wall below a giant statue of a bicycle that's planted on the side of their wall. And they took us on a tour, and they're doing all kinds of really innovative and progressive things there because, you know, they realize that this is really the key to growing without having to deal with a lot of the traffic congestion and those issues and keeping their streets safe and all of that. Over the next couple of months, I'm going to be talking more about some of the innovative ways that I think Glendale can really move forward in making its streets safer for both bicycles and pedestrians. But tonight, I wanted to bring up one project that they're doing there because I'd like us to maybe think about stealing it here. It's a project that they call City Bikes, and what it is, is when you go to their Civic Plaza, there's a big bike locker filled with bikes that any city employee can use to go on short trips, and you just check them in and check them out. And this is something that a program that we can adopt here. We have about 1,200 employees working in this little teeny area just next to downtown, and certainly our employees drive their cars sometimes to go to Brand or to go to lunch or to go on short trips. And instead, to have 10 or 15 bikes that they can grab, not only does it help reduce the congestion in this area, but it also keeps our employees a little healthier and sets a really great example for the city. And I would like to ask my colleagues to support agendizing this item as a low-cost or no-cost program that we can implement to really start leading the way to a more sustainable Glendale.
I'll second the motion.
Okay.
Good idea.
Thank you.
Any other comment, Mr. Najarian?
I have several comments. One of them doesn't directly involve the City of Glendale, but it occurred last week at the corner of Hollywood and Vine when I was present for the ribbon cutting for their new W Hotel, right in the center of Hollywood, a beautiful contemporary-designed hotel with residences on one tower, hotel rooms on another tower, and I couldn't help saying to myself, "What if?" I keep looking at that cornered lot at the Brand and Wilson and picture that W Hotel with all the excitement and all the celebrities and all the hoopla that was surrounding that opening. And I hope that whether it's through the City Council or the Redevelopment Agency that we never lose sight of that open field, which certainly has such great potential nowadays in the City of L.A. Actually, I ran into Cal Hollister, who used to work for us, Kaiser Marston, who is now the head of the Community Redevelopment Agency, quite a high falutin position, and he says that the City of L.A. only contributed $6 million towards that $500 or $600 million project. So it was quite a good deal that was struck. I hope that we continue to keep the development of that corner in our minds. Secondly, I'd like to let everyone know that I am, by way of representing the MTA, now a member of the California Council of Governments. You've heard of SCAG, the Southern California Association of Governments, perhaps the San Gabriel Valley COG, Council of Governments, but there's a statewide agency consisting of about 30 or so representatives from different planning agencies, and I will be attending several of their meetings throughout the year in Sacramento and throughout the state. The last item involves something that happened at the MTA regarding the 710 Tunnel, and I keep telling everyone that the tunnel is on its way. It continues to march forward. And last Thursday is no exception. At the MTA, there was a motion to develop a business plan for a private-public partnership for several projects throughout L.A. County. One of those projects was the 710 Tunnel. Essentially, this would develop a means by which a private developer, in this case, a Spanish firm, no offense, Mr. Quintero, would be -- is -- currently, they're interested in providing some of the billions of dollars necessary to build that tunnel. I tried to have the 710 Tunnel portion removed from that list of five or six projects so I could vote no against it. Unfortunately, included -- that didn't pass, and included in the bundle of projects were some very worthy transit projects, such as the West Side Subway, the Regional Downtown Connector, the Crenshaw Boulevard Transit Corridor, the High Desert Corridor, which will do a lot to relieve our traffic in the northern part of the 210 area. But they wouldn't pull out the 710 Tunnel. So I placed an abstain vote on that item. The way the MTA works is you need seven affirmative votes to pass an item, so an abstention is the same thing as a no vote. Someone asked me, "Why did you abstain? You're so against the tunnel. Are you wishy-washy now?" No, I'm not wishy-washy, but I did want to express my support for the other projects that are very worthy. But the 710 marches on. I know, hopefully, we'll get a report soon from our city attorney as to options. Attorney Jan Chatton-Brown has been emailing, encouraging us to start a dialogue, so we'll -- hopefully, that'll come to council in a short period of time. But, folks, the 710 Tunnel is marching on. It will be in our lifetimes. It will be, if it progresses at the rate that some of its proponents want, they will be breaking ground in less than five years, and completion three or four years after that. So it's in our lifetimes. We should always keep that in mind. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Drayman?
Just a note to one and all about the Glendale Philharmonic Orchestra, which has its second performance this weekend, Saturday. Mr. Weaver, you have the very ad. Saturday, February 6, 2010, at 7:30 P.M. This is being held at the First Baptist Church on Louise Street, and if you haven't been to that facility to see a concert, here's a great opportunity. Aside from being just the First Baptist Church, it also is, for a concert venue, a pin-drop-perfect acoustical facility. It is amazing in there, and it seats easily 1,000 people. It was sold out with standing room only at their first performance, their first concert. And this particular concert date is going to feature, among others, Ruslan Birikov and Friends. This is a performance of cello ensembles, so I urge you all to attend. It's a terrific opportunity to support the arts in the city and at a very highly professional level, so I hope to see you there.
Okay, thank you. Why don't you -- the address again?
The address is 209 North Louise Street, and the phone number for tickets and information is 323 area code 663-3601, and I need younger eyes, or my glasses, one or the other. There we go. Thank you, Mr. Weaver.
All right, thank you very much. Any other comments? Next, please.
Next on the agenda is the consent items, and the following are routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such a request before a motion is proposed. There are no needs for anyone to abstain on the minutes.
Motion?
I'll move the consent calendar.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Drayman.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes. Next, please.
Item 6 would be oral communications.
All right. Paula Devine, followed by, I believe, Steve Mayer.
Evening, Mayor Quintero, City Council members and staff. My name is Paula Devine, and I'm representing the Commission on the Status of Women tonight. One of the goals of the Commission on the Status of Women has always been to raise awareness and to educate the women in our community on their major health issues. Last year, when our focus was on women's health, we forged a partnership with Glendale Adventist Medical Center that I am proud to say continues into this year. Because February is Heart Health Awareness Month, and all women should wear, and men red for Go Red for Women, we are proud to join with the Ladies Auxiliary at Glendale Adventist to present a free luncheon. You don't hear "free" very often, but free luncheon, it'll be fabulous because they have a great chef, and a program which will address the differences of heart attacks between men and women. It is on February 12th. Registration is at 11:30 to noon. I brought Denise Miller with me tonight. She's from Glendale Adventist, and she's going to tell you more about the luncheon.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Quintero, Councilmembers and staff. Thank you for having me. I'm Denise Miller. I'm the manager of Physician Relations, and I'm very happy to tell you about our presentation where we've joined forces with the Commission on the Status of Women. The presentation will be provided by Dr. Edgar Elman. It's appealing to both men and women because he's going to tell you about the differences between, perhaps, if you have a heart attack when you're a man versus a woman. We will have special comments by community members, some of whom you may know, Janice O'Connell and Bob Euseffian and Janice McCurdy, all who have given freedom for me to announce their names and who have experienced different and a variety of cardiovascular issues that they're going to talk about. Following that, we -- there will be -- the proceeds will benefit a giraffe omnibody incubator for our neonato-intensive care unit. All of this can be found at www.glandaleadvenus.com/guild. I also wanted to draw your attention, if I may, to February 4th. It's a very exciting event for the community because Glendale is going to be one of the only communities to bring the world's largest heart exhibit that you can actually walk through. So on February 4th at Glendale Adventist during Heart Month, we will have a unique opportunity for you to come and tour with us, 8:30 to 4:30 P.M. All sorts of schools are attending. We invite the community as well. Thank you for your --
And this is a huge blow-up that people can walk through, and there'll be information and lectures and workshop on it, so it'd be really very unique, and I hope everyone will come, take advantage of the luncheon and all the information that's going to be given there and the mega-heart. Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve, I'm not sure if it's Mayer or Steve Wayne.
If it's Wayne, it's okay.
Followed by Leonard Menucha.
Hi, my name is Steve Moyer. I'm the publicist for the Glendale Philharmonic Orchestra and Positive Motion's concert series. Thank you, Mr. Drayman, for that wonderful, eloquent introduction, and I'll just add a few more words to what you said. The concert that is happening on Saturday, February 6, at 7:30 P.M. at First Baptist Church of Glendale is part of Positive Motion Concert Series. Ruslan Birikov is the artistic director and producer of this event, and the works that will be presented that night will include the works of Handel, Mozart, Bach, Gounod, as well as other composers. And there are two world premieres that will be presented that night, which are of particular note. One is by Carol Worthy, and another is by Dionne Nielsen Price. So as Councilmember Drayman did mention, the last concert on January 9th was sold out, so we do hope that you come and support this very worthy effort. To get tickets, call 323-663-3601. That's 323-663-3601. The website you can visit is www.glandalephillharmonic.com. That's www.glandalephillharmonic.com. The name of the concert is Ruslan Birikov and Friends Cello Ensembles, so it's all cellos plus piano accompaniment, okay? We hope you join us there. It's going to be a great concert, and thank you for having us here tonight.
Leonard Menucha.
Honorable Mayor and members of the Glendale City Council, good evening. I'm Leonard Menucha, a Glendale resident and a past member of the Glendale Planning Commission and currently the co-chair of the Armenian National Committee of Glendale. Tonight, I will be reading a prepared statement. On January 20th, 2010, four current and one former sworn officers of the Glendale --
Mr. Menucha, you may not be aware, the way we break down this oral communications, the first three minutes at the beginning of the meeting for announcements, like you heard about events, et cetera. What you want to speak to will be oral communications where you're given five minutes, and that'll be at the end of the business agenda, which tonight, I think, is pretty light.
No, my statement will be less than three minutes.
No, it doesn't matter, but your statement isn't an announcement about an event that you're hosting or -- so when we get through the agenda, then oral communications resumes, and you'll have full five minutes of speech.
Will do. Thank you.
Okay, that ends the first portion of oral communications. Next, please.
Next is action items. At 8:00 A. is City Attorney regarding consideration of adoption of policy regarding the distribution of tickets or passes received or purchased by the City Redevelopment Agency or Housing Authority and distributed by city officials. At 8:00 A. 1 is a motion adopting written policy.
Mr. Starbird.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'll go to the City Attorney, Scott Howard, for the staff report. Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Starbird. Mr. Mayor, members of council, very quickly, last year in February, the Fair Political Practices Commission promulgated new guidelines through rules, in particular Rule 18944.1, which provides that for public agencies that receive gifts or in the form of passes or tickets from third parties, or they purchase them with their own assets, that cities need to adopt, cities and other public agencies need to adopt written policies that describe the manner and means of distribution of those tickets or passes and the public purpose for those, and that once any of those tickets or passes that have been received or purchased are distributed, those are then posted on a form, which is now called Form 802, on the city's website. In addition, any policy that's adopted must be posted, as they say, prominently on the city website. This is now required by state law. A number of cities have already previously adopted this. A number of cities now are currently in the process of reviewing the law and will be having their city councils consider similar policies as they so choose within the time period as they choose. Before you tonight is a draft written policy for your consideration. It contains the provisions of Rule 18944.1 and establishes the public purposes should any tickets or passes be distributed by either the City Council, Redevelopment Agency, or Housing Authority. I should point out that just historically, it's been fairly rare where the agency is the recipient of gifts of tickets or passes. Agency meaning City Council, Redevelopment Agency, or Housing Authority, and those tickets or passes are distributed to elected officials or other city staff. And it doesn't happen too often, but we are now required to have a written policy to address it when it does. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to respond.
Any questions, Mr. Najarian?
Let me ask a few questions, Scott. Do the disqualification rules still apply if you -- currently, if you receive a gift from an individual exceeding $390?
$420.
$420. You are, what are you, conflicted or you are?
It can act as -- that is the threshold for disqualification if the matter comes to you within 12 months of receipt of that gift. Those disqualification rules apply when the gift is either given directly to an elected official or earmarked for a specific elected official. The gifts or passes or tickets or passes we're talking about are given to an agency, and then the agency distributes them. So they are not -- they don't rise to the level for disqualification of a particular agency member who receives them. They just have to be reported, and that form has to be posted on the website.
Well, I know occasionally, when I was mayor, mayor was giving two tickets to the Rose Bowl game. The value of those tickets, I'm not sure what the face value was, but let's assume the face value was over the threshold at that time or the time that it's received. What does that do to -- and let's say they came from the city of Pasadena. Am I then forced to recuse myself from any issue that involves the city of Pasadena, such as joint powers or joint transportation lines with a tri-city bus company or police force or ISIS or anything like that?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Najarian, there's a number of exceptions to the gift rules. What we're focusing on right now are passes and tickets that are given to the agency for distribution to councilmembers. In regard to your specific question, one, there was, up until recently, and again, this is a different rule change now that occurred last year with the FPPC, there was an exemption for nonprofit agencies that provide tickets or passes to events. And actually, the Rose Bowl was the subject of an FPPC opinion where they determined that the Rose Bowl and the Rose Parade were actually nonprofit events, and as such, the ticket had or pass had no value. So it was not required to be reported. It did not rise to the $50 level for reporting, or the, back then, it was $390 and then less for disqualification.
The rules are playing the game, of course. If USC is playing, there's quite a bit of value. That other school across town, I would agree with you.
The rules have changed. For example, under this policy, if you receive more than one ticket, the agency ticket wouldn't require you to qualify, but more than one ticket would have to be reported if it reached the $50 threshold.
So is this only a reporting issue here, or is there a disqualification?
It doesn't result in disqualification if it's over one ticket, but it's pretty, from the same source. If it's more than one ticket from the same source that equals $420 within a 12-month period prior to a vote, then it would require disqualification. You're entitled to one, essentially, one ticket. And again, there's some exceptions. Depending on what the, if it's, for example, a political event, it has no value.
Sometimes we're offered free tickets to luncheons in which we do not perform, or concerts for that reason, which we do not perform a ceremonial function. So what we're dealing now is, we're talking about just a reporting requirement to, on this Form 8-
802.
802, just to report that these-
Yes, but only if those tickets are distributed to you from the city, the redevelopment agency, or the housing authority. If you get a ticket directly from XYZ entity that provides you with a ticket to attend a luncheon, and it's, and you don't perform an official, in your official capacity, provide a speech, a greeting, or anything of that nature, that may be reportable as a gift to you. But when the redevelopment agency receives a gift from an outside source, or if the redevelopment agency purchases passes or tickets to an event, and then distributes them per this policy, if it were to adopt it, that's when the report on Form 802 comes into play. And these are now new regulations. In the past, we would receive, if we received about hypothetically 10 tickets for an event that fell within these regulations, those could be distributed, and we'd have to note the names of the individuals to whom distributed, and those names would be on a list given to the city clerk as a public record. There wouldn't be this Form 802 requirement. There wouldn't be a number of limitations. You wouldn't have to post on the report, for example, what the public purpose is for providing these tickets or distributing the tickets to the public officials.
We bought a, the city bought a table to the police luncheon, or annually, they buy a table to the police luncheon, and we're often distributed those tickets through the city, I presume. So is this the type of event that we're talking about?
It may very well be, it may very well be an 802 reporting requirement. It depends. There are some exemptions. As I know, one exemption is if you're performing in official capacity. The mayor sometimes will go to any of these events and perform in their role as mayor, in which case it's not reportable. In addition, if you were to receive-
About standing up and acknowledging, you know?
It's got to be a little bit more than that.
Well, and might other than the example you used, in that case, the city purchased the tickets, which is another one of the full face value of the tickets, is another exemption under the policy.
Well, if the city purchases the ticket, though, that's actually included now in this Form 802 requirement. It's either received from a third party. Sometimes, third parties will just give the city five tickets for X. If the city goes out and purchases those tickets and then distributes them pursuant to the policy, it would also have to be reported on Form 802.
So this motion before us is directing staff to adopt the written policy?
The actual, the written policy is here. It would be adopting the policy.
The requirement of 18944.1 is for the legislative body to adopt a written policy
to address the distribution of the tickets. There's a, what's not included in this report is that these weren't the only rule changes by the FPPC, but this is the only rule change that requires that you consider and adopt a written policy. There's now a Form 801 for donors of tickets, but you don't have to adopt a policy for that. And there's Form 803, which happens to be the form that they use now for the behesting, and that's a whole different other issue. What's really before you is that, that narrow requirement that you adopt a policy that involves the, or handles the distribution. If you, we're bringing it for you, before you now, this rule went into effect just slightly under a year ago, and I've noted that some cities, Pasadena, for example, has adopted a policy, a couple of cities down in the Riverside County area, Rancho Mirage, Palm Desert, and a couple of those. Burbank is in the process of considering one. There's no penalty for not adopting it, but there, well, I shouldn't say there's no penalty. There could be penalties for failing to adopt, and I haven't heard the FPPC go after a city for not adopting one. My suggestion is if you feel that you want to look into this a little bit more, it is a little prolix. We've got specific provisions in here relating to what, what, one of these, including but not limited to what is a public purpose and how it works. Certainly, I don't think there'd be any problem if it were put over for a week or two, if there's a need to do that. But the policy as drafted is consistent with all of the provisions of 18944.1, and I did pull up a couple of the policies from some of the other cities as I drafted it. I wanted to make sure that if they saw something I didn't, that, that either included or they excluded, that I wasn't missing anything.
I mean, there are a lot of, we get invitations and tickets and requests in a variety of situations. I would feel more comfortable if we could look at this maybe another week and, and then come back. For instance, the boxing match, I think we all had a very keen interest in making sure that it was being managed properly, everything from alcohol sales to police enforcement, to tenor of the crowd, and all that. If we were to attend in that manner, is that something that's reportable, or are we doing an official function in basically, not keeping an eye, but observing the way that our staff is managing this event, for example?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, councilmember Njerian, it's a good question. It would depend, in part, who or what entity provided you with the ticket. If it was a direct, if the promoter of the boxing event, or ESPN, or someone else provided you with a ticket, it would be a direct gift to you. And then the whole question of, is it exempt? Are you performing in your ceremonial role, et cetera? That would become an issue that we'd have to look at, but that would be, that would not be included within this policy. This policy only relates to tickets or passes to events that are provided to the agency, and I mean, I'm using the agency in the larger term of all three, housing authority, redevelopment council. Tickets or passes that are provided to the agency, or the agency purchases those and then distributes them. So it's the acquisition by the agency and then distribution by the agency that falls within the policy that's before you today, not where a promoter or some third party provides you with a ticket or an invitation to attend an event. Those are analyzed under what I'll call traditional, the traditional eight-step analysis under Fair Political Practices Commission regulations.
What are we talking about? Like, let's say the VICA dinner, the annual VICA dinner.
Chamber of Commerce.
The redevelopment agency purchases the tickets.
If the, yes. If the agency purchases the tickets, and again, if it doesn't fall within an exception, and there's only really two, it's ceremonial function, and the individual who actually is distributing the ticket says, I want to treat it as income. If you treat it as income and you report it as income, and the agency reports it as income, then it's not. But forgetting those two exceptions, the answer would be yes. Then it would be a reportable interest on Form 802. As I've noted, it's not, it's somewhat rare, given our past experience. Pasadena has a lot more experience with this because they have that Rose Bowl, or the Rose Bowl, or Rose Parade Commission, that actually, they put in charge of distributing those tickets under their policy because of the details, or because of the, the fact that they control the Rose Bowl and the Rose Bowl game and the Rose Parade and the use of the Rose Bowl. So they have, I think, a little more, a little, a greater issue with that. This whole, the history of this section, or this, this rule change, really sprung from Anaheim and from San Jose. San Jose because of the use of their convention center by a lot of local elected officials, and Anaheim because Anaheim, Disneyland is there, and they would provide a number of tickets to public officials in Disneyland for use for entertaining dignitaries from out of town and elsewhere. And as a result, the FPPC began, and many of us call it the Anaheim or the Disneyland rule, because that's where it sprung from. They began to have hearings about the whole use of those tickets given to the public agency for then distribution, and determined that they wanted to, FPPC, that is, determined they wanted to tighten up the rules, so there was more transparency in how those tickets were received, and that's a Form 801, and how those tickets are distributed and used for a public purpose.
Okay, what do you need from us tonight? Pass the resolution, the motion?
If the, if the council feels that the, if the council feels that it's appropriate to do so, the policy, again, meets the requirements of the FPPC, not only based on my, my review of the section, which I've attached as an exhibit, but also my review of a couple of other policies, not, at least of which is Pasadena's, that I've reviewed as well, to ensure that, that they didn't catch something that I missed, or they didn't, they weren't over-inclusive, to essentially want to, to want to make sure that you're following the law, that we're adopting the policies required. We'll post it on the website once it's adopted, as required. And then, as we receive, if we do receive, tickets or passes, as an agency, the city manager would be, is the designated individual for distribution of those. If they're distributed, we would then report the distribution of those, the name of the individual, the event, and the public purpose on a Form 802, which would then be posted on the website.
Okay, well, I think it's a good idea. I mean, it's transparent, people understand doing and other staff, so I have a problem with it. Mr. Weaver?
I'll move 8A1.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Drayman?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Njerian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes.
Next, please.
9A is hearing, under 9, which is hearings, that 9A is Director of Community Planning regarding appeal of tentative parcel map, number GLN 1625, located at 2246 to 2248 Rafael Terrace. And 9A1 is a motion sustaining the planning commission's decision to deny the tentative parcel map. 9A2 is a motion continuing the hearing pending preparation of alternative findings and appropriate conditions of approval.
Is this still?
This will be Mr. Higani.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I put a copy of a letter that we received from the appellant in this case after conversations with staff, and the written letter from the appellant. The, the appellant has new information that was not considered by the planning commission, pertinent information that would justify remanding the project directly back to the planning commission, so the planning commission has the opportunity to review that additional information. So for that reason, we are requesting that you do not open this case and review, directly remand it back to the planning commission, so that the appellant has the opportunity to have that dialogue.
Okay, any motion?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, we can certainly add 9A3, a motion to remand the matter back to the planning commission, consistent with the council's determination as outlined in the January 28, 2010, letter from Denilian Real Estate and Financial Services, that there is new information about the project that they would like to present to the planning commission that was not reasonably available at the time that the matter was first heard. If this, if the, if the mayor wants to ask the, the proponent of the project, or anyone else, if they have a comment on just that, you're free to do so.
Okay, is there someone that would like to comment, or are you satisfied we'll remand it back to the planning commission? I don't see a response. Mr. Njerian?
I have a question. Mr. Howard, who, who makes that threshold analysis, that decision, that there was information that was not reasonably available? Is that, does the planning commission hear that question first, and then, if so, then they hear the?
Actually, the city council does. To remand it back, under these circumstances, the council makes the determination, that's why I included the language in the motion, makes the determination that there is new information to be presented to the planning commission that was not available.
Okay. So shouldn't someone be telling us that there is information that was not available?
Mr. Higani can certainly do that. He and I have all spoken-
I hate to be a stickler for details, but-
Just prior to the meeting, we actually spoke-
I'm going that way these last few meetings.
I asked him the same question.
Yes, Higani?
So if you could answer that, I, you know-
Yes, well, based on the conversation we had with the appellant, the appellant actually presented that had they known about staff's recommendation to the planning commission, they would have presented some other ideas to the planning commission, which they didn't get the opportunity to provide. In addition, there were some renderings that they think would have contributed to the planning commission's understanding of certain constraints that they were facing, that they think would, with that additional information, the planning commission would, would have reason to reconsider some of their decision in the past. For that, we thought that was a reasonable set of circumstances that the appellant provided, and we would like to give them that opportunity to have that dialogue with the planning commission, that's all.
That seems reasonable. Are you satisfied? You don't want her to know?
I believe the planning director inherently, so that's good enough for me. We'll let them take it back to planning.
Mayor?
The commission, planning commission.
I'll make the motion.
Well, the appellant chooses not to speak at this time, so we'll go back to, all right, your motion is-
Make the motion that Mr. Howard stated.
There's new evidence and it's not reasonably available.
9A3.
9A3.
Okay, and is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Drayman?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Njerian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes.
Next, please.
Unless you want to go directly to new business, we can return to oral communications.
Okay, oral communications. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak?
Allow me just to read the preface and let everyone know that discussion at this point is limited to items not part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will not be debate or decision. City manager, mayor, for the matter, to the appropriate department for an investigation and a report.
Leonard Manukian?
Honorable Mayor and members of the Glendale City Council, good evening. I'm Leonard Manukian, a Glendale resident and a past member of the Glendale Planning Commission, and currently the co-chair of the Armenian National Committee of Glendale. Tonight, I will be reading a prepared statement. On January 20th, 2010, four current and one former sworn officers of the Glendale Police Department filed a civil rights lawsuit in federal court alleging discrimination, harassment, and retaliation on the basis of national origin and ancestry. The allegations made in the complaint are both disturbing and appalling. If even a fraction of the allegations in the complaint are established in a court of law, the city of Glendale has a long way to go on the way to becoming the city we all envisioned and deserve. The Armenian National Committee of Glendale is particularly concerned about the statement made by the city attorney, Mr. Scott Howard, immediately following the filing of the complaint. According to the Glendale News Press article of January 25th, 2010, city attorney Howard stated, "There are many allegations in the complaint which are absolutely utterly false. We would expect the city attorney's office, at the very least, conduct a preliminary investigation before opining about the merits of serious allegations such as those contained in the complaint." The Glendale Police Department has a track record of lawsuits stemming from discrimination and improper conduct by its officers, many of which have resulted in settlements or jury verdicts against the city, and even punitive damages against individual police officers. The 2009 jury verdict of $1.58 million, including attorney's fees, in the Ovassapian versus the city of Glendale case, is the latest example in the now-long list of judgments resulting in adverse court decisions against the city. The city's inability and unwillingness to conduct meaningful and objective investigations into the merits of the complaints of police misconduct in the past have resulted in many millions of dollars which Glendale residents have been forced to bear. In fact, even after an adverse judgment in the Ovassapian case, this city council, during public session, made a statement essentially absolving the police officers and the department of any wrongdoing, and by assuming the $150,000 punitive damages award against the individual officers. Despite the finding of malice by the federal court and jury, the city, the Glendale City Council released the following statement during its October 27th, 2009 meeting, which stated, "We recognize that this was a very unfortunate incident. However, we find that the officers acted in good faith, without actual malice and in the apparent best interests of the city of Glendale. In effect, the city council condoned the wrongful acts of these police officers. Not surprisingly, both officers are named defendants in the current lawsuit. In the months to come, the judicial process will be guided by a federal district court judge and the outcome decided by a jury. In the meantime, it is very important that the officials of the city of Glendale and the Glendale Police Department refrain from drawing conclusions about this lawsuit until there's full investigation and due process. It is also very important that as the judicial process runs its course, the police officers presenting these charges, and in fact, all members of the Glendale Police Department be shielded from any direct or indirect workplace harassment or retaliation. The Armenian National Committee of Glendale will be closely monitoring this case with the expectation that there will be full transparency in the investigation and the confidence that the judicial system will reveal the facts and lead to an ultimately fair outcome." Thank you very much.
Thank you. Margaret Hammond?
Good evening, Your Honor, members of the council, staff, and audience. My name is Margaret Hammond, and I have been a resident of this city for 50 years. In the early days when I came, we, we had a diverse community already when I came, and I come from a city where there was not a diverse community. I thoroughly enjoyed the different- I thoroughly enjoyed the different people's food and their customs and so forth, and it was wonderful to be able to join in and be friends with my neighbors, who were, some of them from Germany, some of them were Japanese, many different countries. And there wasn't, we didn't have a big problem at that time. I don't understand in these later years why we're having so much anger and angst and whatever you want to call it, because it certainly doesn't make for a better community. The quality of life is only going to go down the more often that we fight with each other and call each other names and point fingers and so forth. I think it's very unfortunate. There are some very wonderful citizens in this city. Over and over, you see them who give thousands of hours of time for volunteer service, to help children, elderly, and every homeless people. So, I do feel that it's too bad that the city is being given a bad black eye, let's say, in that there is this discussion regarding our police department. I, again, over and over, will say this, I feel that our police department is one of the finest that there is. Anytime I have had any dealings with them, and I've had personal dealings in personal matters, I've always found them to be very fair, and I really, truly would like to say once again, where would we be without our police department? We'd be the Wild West, and we would not be safe in our streets. I mean, I can go out at 12 o'clock, 1 o'clock at night, and by myself, driving in the city, and never fear. I have no fear. And without the police department, I know other people who live in other cities, I have friends who live in other cities, and they talk about, they phone the police department, they're lucky if they get there two or three hours later. So, I do feel that, I wish that we could have a better attitude toward our police department. There are always problems, but not to the extent that it seems to be at this time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That closes oral communications. Any comments from the dais? All right, next, please. Next is new business. Mr. Najarian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that the city attorney be and hereby is authorized to enter into a retainer agreement with Bradley D. Pierce Esquire of the Pierce Law Firm, P.C., who represent the interests of the city of Glendale in connection with litigation against the city entitled Dewop LLC versus City of Glendale, Los Angeles Superior Court, case number BC 429281. The retainer agreement shall, in addition to other provisions, contain a fee cap and an estimated budget for the handling of said matter.
Second, a second. Roll call.
Councilmembers Drayman?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes.
Ms. Friedman?
I will move that the city attorney be and hereby is authorized to enter into a retainer agreement with the law offices of Myers, Nave, Ryback, Silver &amp; Wilson, Kim Klowell, and Kevin Gilbert, to represent the city of Glendale and all named defendants in the manner titled Topasapian et al. versus City of Glendale et al., case number CV 10-0387-CAS. The retainer agreement shall, in addition to other provisions, contain a fee cap for work assigned by the city attorney.
Second.
I just, it's, the name is Topazikian, not Topasapian. Just want the record to reflect that.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Drayman?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes.
Next, please.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
We are adjourned.